Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 1 Spokane City Council Legislative Meeting. We're going to have some proclamations and then we're going to hear a neighborhood report from West Hills, and then we're going to have an administrative report and get our annual report from the Human Rights Commission, and then we'll dive into some of our issues, and we will close with open forum later this evening. And I'll try to remember to say this at the end, but we did make a schedule change for next week. We're not going to have a 3:30 briefing session because we have no meeting to brief, and we're going to just simply have our consent agenda at our 6 o'clock meeting next week. So let's start in honoring Black History Month, and Councilmember Wilkerson has something to read for us.
Thank you.
Oh, before, sorry, Councilmember Wilkerson, before you do that.
Call the roll.
I, we're going to call the roll.
Council President Beggs?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Present.
Councilmember Mum?
Here.
Councilmember Stratton? Councilmember Wilkerson?
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Kinnear is absent.
All right. I was just too eager to honor Black History Month. Councilmember Wilkerson, please, take it away.
Thank you. I have to first say that I am extremely honored tonight to be able to read this proclamation. Whereas Black History Month has been officially celebrated in the United States since 1976 by Centennial with the objective to promote the multicultural, economic, political, and social contributions made by African Americans that helped build this great nation, and whereas the city of Spokane takes great pride in the members of our black community in honor organizations, families, and individuals of African American descent, in appreciation of their invaluable contributions in many professions and fields, including education, law, government, business, science, sports, the arts, and brave service in the United States Armed Forces, that continue to enrich the history and culture of our city while continuing to unite and sustain us as a community. And whereas in complimenting the national theme for 2021, the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity, the Spokane Public Library will be screening several videos throughout the month and invite citizens to join in celebrating and learning about the achievements and challenges past and present of African Americans. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in Spokane and encourage all citizens to honor the national and local legacy of African Americans who have made significant contributions throughout our shared history. Tonight, we're pleased to welcome Kiantha Duncan, President of the NAACP, to receive this proclamation. Kiantha?
Thank you. Thank you both to our mayor, who is absent, and to each one of our council members. I made myself just a few quick notes that I'd like to share with you all. Literally, it's one minute worth of notes. My mind has just been very tired. But as I was thinking about this proclamation today, I realized that we really stand at an interesting place right now. We stand at the intersection of what is Black History Month and all of the history of blacks here in Spokane, and we also stand at the intersection of what is the future for blacks in Spokane. I really believe that there have been many varied experiences. For some families, this has been a place with a wide-open gate, with a door that has led to access to education, access to homeownership, access to just being able to provide for their families. And then there is another door that has also been open, and that gate hasn't been so wide for families who have been redlined and experienced discrimination and experienced hardship and not been able to access resources here in Spokane. I believe that you all now, this city council that we have, that our current mayor, that everybody is committed to really doing the work that is necessary. And so while I am so happy to celebrate and accept this proclamation, I hope that you all will work with us every month. Every month is Black History Month. Every month is All History Month. Every month, all of us matter. So thank you very much for allowing me to come and accept this tonight, and I will share this with our community.
Thank you so much, Kiantha, for joining us and speaking those words of wisdom and for all the service you give to the city and the work that we'll be doing together, working with police coming up. So thank you for that. Next, we'd like to recognize Rare Disease Day, and Councilmember Kate Burke is going to read that proclamation, and she'll be joined afterwards by Mary McDermott.
Hello. Hi, Mary. Thanks for joining us. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then you can give us, you can share a few words after. Whereas there are nearly 7,000 diseases and conditions considered rare, each affecting fewer than 20,000 Americans in the United States, according to the National Institute of Health, or the NIH. While each of these diseases may affect small amounts, small numbers of people, rare diseases is a group effect, as a group affects almost 30 million Americans. And whereas, while more than 450 drugs and biologics have been approved for treatment of rare disease, according to the Food and Drug Administration, or the FDA, millions of Americans still have rare diseases of which there are no, there is no approved treatment, and while the public is familiar with rare diseases, many patients and families affected by less widely-known rare diseases bear a large share of the burden of funding research and raising public awareness to support the search for treatment. And whereas many rare diseases are serious and, and the debilitating condition have a significant impact on the lives of those affected, including individuals and families whom often experience problems such as diagnosis delay, difficulties finding a medical expert, and lack of access to treatment services. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the community of Spokane, do hereby proclaim February 28, 2021 as Rare Disease Day in Spokane in, in participation of the National Organization of Rare Disorder, Rare, of, the National Organization of Rare Disorders, or N O R D, National Nationwide Observance. So thanks for joining us, Mary, and you can share a few words.
Yeah, thank you so much. I had Ruth here for just one second, but she kind of ran off. But she's usually running around your chambers there, kind of being herself, which is totally fine. But yeah, I am involved because I have a daughter who has rare disease. She's almost five, and so we have experienced some of those things, and my purpose is to bring more awareness to rare diseases in general. Yeah, come here, baby. Come on, yeah. And so because of her, we know what this is like and what it's, what it entails, and so we just want to bring more awareness. So every year, we'll have a Rare Disease Day event. This year, it'll be the 25th, from noon to 1:30. I just blasted the link on my Facebook and all social media, so if you look my name up, then you can find it. And then we'll always have a speaker that's a caregiver or a parent, a speaker that's a patient, and a speaker that's either a researcher or a provider that's doing something about our rare disease community. Those numbers don't really kind of say it. So if I put the ratio of 1 to 10 on the Spokane County census, that's 6.8% of adults and 22% of kids. So yes, we're rare, and yes, those things all are true, but it affects a huge portion of our population. And so I'm just looking to bring more support to our families so they don't feel alone. And I think this Rare Disease Day event does that. So I would encourage you guys all to participate. If you haven't, it's Zoom. It's the best year to come to events, and it's the best year for our introverts to speak in front of people. So yeah, I would just encourage you guys to come to the event. If you haven't been there, I'm sure Kate could get you the info if you need it. And yeah, just know we're all going to be a caregiver at one point, and this is just our little part of bringing that awareness. So thank you so much to the council and the mayor and everybody that attended.
Thanks, Mary. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mary, so much for bringing, being the messenger for this message and for organizing these events. We really appreciate your showing up. Next, we're going to move to a new segment. As many of you know, we used to have four quarterly town hall meetings where we would hear from a area of the city's neighborhoods and hear what was going on in the neighborhoods and what the neighborhood councils were going to do. We only managed to get, I think, one of those in last year before the COVID protocols hit us, and we didn't hear anyone. So this year, we decided, in consultation with the neighborhoods, to just essentially adopt a neighborhood every week or so and have them report to us. And so this week, it's our privilege to have the West Hills neighborhood, which is kind of split between District 2 and District 3, so they're kind of in an interesting location there. And I'm going to invite Karen Carlberg and anyone that she brought with her to give us a report.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll share the screen. Boy, I'm seeing things that, okay, that'll work. I needed to do that first, I guess. Well, I'll just, I'll just share this the way it is. Okay, so we did have a quiet year in West Hills. So there are things that did not happen in West Hills in 2020. We usually have six meetings per year. Four of them were canceled. We only had two. We didn't have our neighborhood cleanups. We had planned to have a movie night with Grandview Thorpe, but that was canceled, and we didn't start any new initiatives. We didn't have a lot going on in the neighborhood, and without having meetings or knowing when we were going to have meetings, we just didn't. But there are some things that did happen. A couple of the best things that happened are things that really did not have anything directly to do with the neighborhood council at all. So Whistock's Way got its new name. We're happy about that. And the Ascenda property finally got its approval for a change in land use, so now they can begin construction of their new buildings. So that's something we've been involved with for two or three years, so we're happy to see that completed to this point. We did do some pretty ordinary things during the year. We did have two meetings in February and October. The city bought us a Zoom account, which allowed us to have our October meeting, and it now allows us to start regular meetings for this year, starting next week. At those two meetings that we did have, we learned about changes to the bus routes on Sunset Boulevard, which is important to a lot of our neighbors. In the February meeting, they showed us some possibilities for changes, asked our opinions, and then October, they told us about the final version. In October, we also had a candidate forum for District 6 state representative candidates, and we did our mobile speed signs. Some things that are happening in West Hills that do not directly involve the neighborhood council. First, the Susie Stevens Trail will be entirely within our neighborhood when it's built, and you probably know that the city received a grant for this maybe a couple of years ago, and it hasn't started construction yet. We're not sure why, but at our meeting next week, Angel Spell will come to talk about it, and maybe we'll learn about what's going on and see whether or not there's something we can do to help them get going. And then secondly, the Fish Lake Trail Centennial Trail Connection is in the planning stages. I am representing West Hills on the advisory committee for that, so we're going to be talking about that at our meeting next week. So with the pandemic and not having, not having very many meetings, we've become more dependent, I think, on Nextdoor, which is the social media that we're using. And we have continued to get new enrollments in Nextdoor. Right now, we're up to over 900 members. When I talked to you a year ago, it was over 800. When I talked to you two years ago, it was 400. The year before that, it was 200. So we've had a big increase in the number of people who are connecting to our neighborhood. And a lot of that effort is thanks to Karen Jurison, who's been sending out invitations regularly. So we use Nextdoor, then, to disseminate information from the city or other agencies or anything else that needs to go out. We've been using it to disseminate community assembly reports, since we're not able to do it at meetings. And then a couple of my own subjective observations about Nextdoor. One is that I think we're seeing a lot more kindness, people offering help to others who might need it as a result of the pandemic, or just offering words of encouragement or joy, or things to help people get through this pandemic. Another thing I've noticed is more moose pictures. And I don't think we have more moose in our neighborhood. I think we have more people home during the day to see the moose and take pictures and post their pictures, but that's been fun. Now, West Hills does have some concerns. We have some of our neighbors living on unpaid streets. They'd like to have them paid. We have some arterials that we do worry about because we expect to have increased traffic, partly because there is increasing employment on the West Plains, and so there's increased traffic, and this will continue, between the West Plains and Spokane, and a lot of that goes on I-90, but some of it comes through our neighborhood. And then in addition to that, we've got quite a bit of new apartment construction going on, and so that also will increase traffic on our arterials. So we've got four major arterials in our neighborhood. Sunset Boulevard, of course, was just recently rebuilt, and so that's nice. But we are having and expect to have more problems with intersections at both Assembly and Russell. Assembly and Russell are cross streets with Sunset Boulevard. They're right next to one another, and they're at the top of Sunset Hill. So at Assembly, that's where people from all these apartments, as well as a lot of the rest of the neighborhood, get onto Sunset Boulevard. And so there's going to be even more traffic through there. And I have had an email conversation with one of the city engineers, and she told me that they are planning to probably put a new light there. They're just waiting for the traffic to be bad enough. So I think we don't probably need to worry about that too much. I think that's going to happen. And then at Russell, that is where traffic coming from I-90 through the Garden Springs exits, both eastbound and westbound, empties into the neighborhood, and from there, it goes to Sunset Boulevard. And that is a very awkward intersection, and as traffic increases, I think that's going to become more difficult, and we might need to look for some more solutions there. Then we have Geiger Boulevard, which is currently being reconstructed, so I think that's probably taken care of. For Government Way, you know, it's okay right now, but we do worry about it. We do have a traffic calming project that was approved a couple of years ago, and we're just waiting for that to happen. That will help. And then with Whistock's Way, we did have a city project with some planning for that a few years ago, and then that was abandoned. So I think we just need to keep an eye on all four of those. And then West Hills also has concerns with crime. We have a lot of petty crimes like thefts and break-ins going on, and I have, I have had some conversations mainly by email with Carly Courtright about this. She says that our crime, our crime rate is pretty low, really, compared to other neighborhoods. So I guess we can't complain too much, but it's there. The bigger issue, which is becoming bigger rapidly right now, is at Motel 6, which is at the intersection of Sunset Boulevard and Russell. And this has been a problem for a long time. I've been in the neighborhood seven years, and ever since I've been here, every time we have a police officer at one of our meetings, they tell us that most of the crime in our neighborhood is associated with the Motel 6. And this isn't changing, and it's getting frustrated, frustrating that it's not changing. And this has become a much bigger issue just in the last few weeks because there was an assault and robbery that was reported on Nextdoor about three weeks ago, and that has generated a lot of anger and outrage and energy on Nextdoor. And now everybody is interested in this. And even just in the last few days, even today, more people are wanting to be active in this. So all of a sudden, it's blowing up. So, you know, we're used to being in a very safe neighborhood. We don't like this. We're not used to this, and we're not sure what we can do about it. So we're just starting to put together a group of people who maybe can figure this out and start working on this. But among the reasons that it matters is that we've got a large apartment population right around this intersection. We've got a new apartment complex that is under construction, which is going to be pretty large, right there. And then there's another apartment building that's going to be built just down the road on Sunset Boulevard. So there are a lot of people around there, and the STA stop is right there. And so all of the people who use that STA stop to get in and out of our neighborhood have to walk right by that motel. So we really want to do something about this, and we're just getting started, and so the more help, the more ideas we can find, better. And I appreciate any suggestions any of you might have. So we're all hoping that 2021 will be a better year. That's it.
Thank you so much, Karen, for bringing us news from your West Hills neighborhood. Does anyone have any particular questions or comments for Karen? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, hi, Karen. Thank you very much for the presentation. I just wanted to share, last summer, I was on a ride-along with SPD, and we had to avoid a B and E on the South Hill to visit that Motel 6 that you were talking about because of some issues there with some, some folks that were on drugs, fighting, and, and creating an issue. And I know the officer at the time said that it was a pretty frequent stop for him and, and a source of frustration. So I, I hear you on how difficult that is, and, and not my district, but certainly very interested in finding ways we can better respond to some of these criminal complaints.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton?
Just a quick question, Karen, and maybe Candace Mum and I can talk about this offline. Has anybody or there been a group of neighbors with the police department during your meetings that have talked about sitting down and meeting with Motel 6, the owners?
Uh, no, not that specifically. I don't know that the owners are local. I don't know if they are or not.
Okay. Maybe Councilmember Mum and I can get that sub thought and talk about, you know, maybe have cops or the police department go out, and maybe we can do some of that safety by environmental design and, you know, kind of have more lighting and that kind of thing, because that tends to help a little bit. So we can talk about that offline and keep you posted.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Karen, thanks for kicking off 2021 Neighborhood Council Reports, one per meeting. So thank you so much. You did a great job. Appreciated the pictures, especially the moose.
Thank you.
Let's turn now to what we call the administration report, and this week, it's the annual report from the Spokane City Human Rights Commission, and we have its chair, Lance Kissler, with us this evening. So take it away, Lance.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here to provide a report from the City of Spokane Human Rights Commission. I'm Lance Kissler, and I'm serving my second term as Chair of the Commission. Tonight, I will be sharing two items with you. Tonight, I will be sharing two items with you. First, our 2020 Annual Report, and then an update from the task force that was chartered by the Commission to conduct research and make recommendations on an Office of Civil Rights for the city. First, our 2020 Annual Report. Back in 2019, the Commission developed a biennial work plan. It was only a few months into 2020 that our plan was quickly thwarted by a global pandemic. It was only a few months later that our society began to have a long overdue reckoning with social justice. And it was even more evident and clear that our Commission had much more work to be done, a lot more than what was laid out in our original work plan. Commissioners facilitated and participated in online activities, meetings, and forums, ensuring the continuation of our activities. Many in-person community engagement opportunities were canceled, and while some were moved to a virtual format, we continued. While the SHRC did not exhaust its full budget for the year, and that was greatly due to a donation received from a local business along with some fewer expenses, we know that we'll incur more this year and in the future with more in-person events. We promoted the 2020 census. We spoke out about acts of hate and discrimination in the community. We engaged community organizations and stakeholders, participated in city policy work, and helped put on the 2020 Human Rights Awards in partnership with the Spokane County Human Rights Task Force, and much, much more. While we navigated many challenges over the past year and had to make numerous adjustments, I am proud that our Commission and my fellow commissioners pushed forward, and that we were able to accomplish everything that is outlined in my full written report that has been provided to you. But as I said, we have much more work to be done, far more than can ever be accomplished by a Commission of nine volunteer community members with limited resources. That is not to negate nor diminish what we've accomplished, nor your support, and what we as a Commission are setting out to do in the year ahead. It is a call for us to fulfill our mission and advocate to our city leadership about the policies and resources needed to ensure the human rights of our city's residents are not violated and to prevent unjust discrimination upon anyone in our community. And that leads me to my second item that is being shared with you tonight, an interim report from the Office of Civil Rights Exploratory Task Force. The task force was established by the Commission at its December 2019 meeting to research the desirability, feasibility, and viability of a city-funded Office of Civil Rights. The ten-member task force is comprised of four commissioners and six community members, and were specifically charged with identifying and assessing rationale via community surveys, key stakeholder interviews, data and report analysis, and other methods of research. We provide regular updates to the Commission, and we are developing and presenting a comprehensive report and recommendation for the Commission's review and approval. Upon approval, those findings will be presented to you, City Council, and the Mayor's office for consideration. The group began meeting in person in early 2020 and continued to meet virtually after the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. While the pandemic slowed the progress of the group's work presenting logistical challenges via remote collaboration, the numerous incidents of hate, racism, and discrimination in our community and across the nation only further galvanized the group's resolve to move this initiative forward. Local occurrences of these heinous activities are a painful reminder that our civil rights work is not done, and that it will require an unwavering commitment from our local leaders to ensure every community member feels safe and welcome. Admirable work has been completed by the task force, and tonight I want to share with you a few key highlights that I strongly encourage all of our councilmembers, as well as the city administration, to take into consideration as we move forward. First, the task force has partnered with the Gonzaga Institute for Hate Studies to conduct primary research, called the GLORY Study, gathering quantitative and qualitative data on responsibilities and structures of offices that are dedicated to civil rights, equity, and inclusion. While the research is not yet completed, there are some initial themes that have emerged. And I want to share these themes with you. I'm going to pull up my screen. Can everyone see the themes? Great. The first one is addressing discrimination and hate crimes. This includes enforcement. Second one is engaging the community and impacted populations, so community engagement. The third one is providing education and training. And the fourth is conducting assessment and ensuring accountability. It is these four areas that come together to create an ecosystem that is both responsive and proactive, rather than passive or reactive. They address both internal and external issues, those that are systemic and those that are around civil and human rights, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Second, the task force is also analyzing the need for a holistic approach, including a review of the numerous complaints that the Spokane NAACP has received from community members, along with data from the Spokane County Human Rights Task Force and the Washington State Human Rights Commission. Third, the task force will begin to assess the desire from our community for this type of resource by conducting outreach and gathering feedback on the research we've conducted and the work that we produce. But if what we saw over the past year is any sort of indication, then we know that both the need is unmet and the desire is unfulfilled. We want to acknowledge that the city has already taken steps in the right direction. Hiring positions that support diversity, equity, and inclusion, and specifically civil rights, help us get there. However, we believe that a holistic approach must be taken in order to create a thriving city for all. Please keep in mind that a healthy ecosystem relies upon all of the parts working together. And when it comes to civil rights, we will need more than just enforcement to protect our friends and neighbors. We will need a comprehensive model, an office that is adequately staffed and has the resources it needs to be effective. We look forward to presenting you with our recommendation once our work is completed. And we look forward to our future meetings with city leadership to move forward together. I thank my fellow task force members for their hard work and dedication, and all of you for your time this evening. And I stand for questions.
Thank you, Lance. Any questions for Chair Kistler at this point? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, and thank you, Lance, for that report, what's been going on. I guess the community just struggles with enforcement. That is just the biggest challenge that I keep hearing back from. We could create this office, but are we really putting any teeth into it to help with outcomes for the people who've come to us, or our partnership with other groups for outcome? That's been a continued frustration, I think, across the board. So any thoughts along those lines, Lance? I'm not asking conclusions, just thoughts.
Yeah. So I want to stress that we have a lot more work to do, and we're going to look at a number of different models that are out there. And what we are seeing is that there are a number of Office of Civil Rights, or various iterations of what they may be called, that handle complaints and investigations. They conduct referrals, they have reporting, and they have the enforcement aspect. Right now, we have Title 18, and it's, to be frank, it's pretty unclear as to how Title 18 should be addressed by the city. It references the Commission. However, our Commission is nine volunteers, as I mentioned, we're not staffed fully, and we don't have training to conduct complaints and investigations. We don't have any enforcement mechanisms. There are some in place at the city that I'm aware of, but we definitely identified some gaps over the past year or two, at least while I've been Chair of the Commission, where things could slip through the cracks. And so that is just one aspect of what an office should be looking at. So I go back to those four themes, and when we talk about an ecosystem working together, certainly enforcement is a concern that we've heard in the community. But enforcement is only treating the symptoms. Enforcement doesn't take care of things such as engaging the community and working proactively to change people's hearts and minds, if you will, about how they interact with one another, how they treat one another, and understanding one another. The assessment and accountability piece is really taking a look at how do we do this in the best way possible? What are we missing within our own systems or out in the community? And then the education and training piece kind of ties back into that community engagement aspect, where we're understanding who we are as people and how we interact with one another. We're looking at how we are trying to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion within our own organizations, such as hiring and promotion of staff, how we look at implicit bias, and so on. So all four of these components need to work together. I think what we saw a lot over this past year was concern about the enforcement piece. We see these incidents happening, and one of the first things that people ask is, who's going to take care of that? How are they going to be brought to justice? And so I think that while that might be the tip of the iceberg that we've seen over the past year, there's a whole lot more that we need to be thinking about when it comes to civil rights.
Councilmember Stratton.
Just, I just wanted to clarify a little bit, Lance. When we worked on Title 18, just so you know, we did have that piece in there. We did have a staff piece in there. And I believe that Brian McClatchy could probably correct me, it's been a while. But we had worked that really from a staff position in enforcement even into the courts with the city prosecutor. Any of that information, and I think what happened was, we had it, but the position was never filled. And I think that's where they left it. But if you need any of those materials, any records from those discussions that might be helpful, let me know, because I think we did have it all laid out on how that made sense to us at the time that we could move forward. And those discussions included a legal piece as well. So if you needed that information, just let me know.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other questions or comments? Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with that, Lance. We did have a pretty elaborate model that would use mediation, that would use investigation, that would use our city attorney's office, and we were just unsuccessful in getting the then administration to hire a dedicated person. But even that one would have been kind of a shadow of what you're really imagining with the full engagement and education. And the assessment piece, I think, is really good so we can measure our progress. I did meet with the mayor a couple of weeks ago, and she agreed to sit down with your task force and some of us from council and talk about what that office might look like so that when we hire the person, because she has agreed to hire the initial person, we can hire someone that's built to do the job for one person, but also that we could imagine them running a department in five years or something like that. So super excited to get your final report and all the work that you've been doing this year. And I hope you noticed, we increased your budget to do that work. So keep up that great work. Thanks for the report. Please give our best to all your Commission members. We appreciate them.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. All right. We have one appointment to the Office of Police Ombudsman Commission, I believe.
Appointment of Lilly Navarrete as the District Two Representative to the Office of the Police Ombudsman Commission for a term ending September 14, 2023.
All those in favor of the appointment indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? We met with Lilly this afternoon, and she's going to do a great job. So thank you, Lilly, for volunteering for us and for the work, and for the entire work of the Commission that's doing great work. And as always, if you are watching and interested in being on one of the numerous commissions and boards that the city sponsors, feel free to call the Mayor's Office. Almost every position is nominated by the mayor. That one position was actually one that's nominated by council, by district. But generally, it's the mayor's process, and then we approve. That brings us to our legislative agenda. And our first item is going to need a motion to suspend the rules to add it to the budget. And we discussed this a little bit at briefing today. It's a special budget ordinance, and it was a little unclear because they use the term planner. This is for the, let me get the right name of the office, the Office of Historic Preservation. In our budget, we approved changing the contract position to a full-time civil service position. But what happened was, is when they put that together in the few weeks after we passed it in the budget before the New Year started, they just used the term planner for that position. But it was for that department. So we're asked, the administration would like us to add to our agenda a motion to change that slightly. The money is still in historic preservation. It stays in historic preservation, but it changes the classification to, from planner one to historic preservation specialist. But I am looking for a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll move to suspend the rule.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions?
Nay.
Okay. The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add this item to our agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Mum. You're on mute.
I just took myself off. Sorry. I wanted to clarify because some people may think that this is taking away from a planning position in our planning department. And the information we got later today is, no, we are not cutting someone out of planning and moving it over to historic preservation. Is that your understanding, Council President?
Yeah, it is just, when they set up the new position, when we funded it, they didn't know what job title to use, so they used the job title planner. But it was not from the planning department. It had nothing to do with that. It's just money in historic preservation, staying there with a new job title.
Right. We need planners. We hope to see more. I just thought I'd also mention, since Lori Kinnear, Councilmember Kinnear, isn't able to be with us here tonight, that, you know, the whole sense of historic preservation is one of the most overlooked aspects of economic impact. And the National Park Service says that historic preservation enhances real estate values, fosters local business, and keeps historic main streets and downtowns economically viable, not to mention the huge tourism component with heritage cities such as Spokane. And you might recall, not too long ago, Spokane has done such a great job with historic preservation that we attracted the National Convention on the Trust for Historic Preservation, which chose Spokane for its national conference and brought 1,700 people to use Spokane, in part, as a model of how to enhance business through historic preservation, things like the Davenport, the Montvale, and the Lusso Hotel, and the Fox, and Bing Crosby Theater. So again, I want to thank Councilmember Kinnear for her leadership on this, and this has been a long time coming, by permanently doubling the size of this office will continue to have the business improvement through historic preservation.
Councilmember Stratton, and then Cathcart. Councilmember Stratton.
I just would add that the director, the current director of this department, has done a wonderful job with the resources that she's had. She's asked, this is probably year three that she has asked for help. She's asked for some full-time help in that office. She doesn't have a staff, but this would really be helpful to her. So I wholeheartedly support it, and I think it's muted, and I think that she's done an expert job. And I think we're going to see more good work coming out of that office with this position.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to support this tonight, and it's not in opposition to historic preservation. It's, to me, we have such limited resources, and those resources are fairly precious. And to me, if we're going to create a new permanent position, it should be a planner, and it should be somebody focused on near-term housing solutions that we can move forward pretty quick with. So for that reason, I think that should be the priority before historic preservation. And so that's why I'll vote no tonight.
All right. So right now, the motion is simply to add it to the agenda. We've bled over to the substance, which is just fine, because we'll get to that next. But all those in favor of adding it to tonight's agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstention? Okay. It's added to the agenda, and Ms. Fister, if you could go ahead and read it.
Ordinance C-36006, amending ordinance number C-35971, passed by the City Council, December 14, 2023. December 14, 2020, and entitled, and ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in general fund from historic preservation various accounts, $63,664, to historic preservation various accounts and amount. This action allows for the reclassification of the vacant planner one position to create the historic preservation specialist position.
All right. And we do have some public comment, and I meant to just put this out as a tip earlier this evening, and that is, if you're planning on testifying, and we have several people, make sure that you're listening on the phone, because we do have a pretty significant video delay. So, if you wait to see me call your name on video, you'll be too late. We will have moved on. So, but we have, on this issue, Christian Rosenau, who would like to testify. And Christian, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right. We're not seeing anything. Given my comment, I'm just going to make a quick comment about this office and the position and why we funded it. A lot of neighborhoods are still doing their planning and overlays, whether it be for historical overlay or agricultural overlay or any other overlays, so that they can keep their neighborhood character while expanding the density of housing in their neighborhoods. And in order to accomplish that, we need someone. And also, I want to be clear that I think most of us agree with Mr., Councilmember Cathcart, that we need more planners. We've funded more planners than they have hired, and I will continue to personally urge the mayor to hire all the planners that we funded so that we have all them, because I couldn't agree with you more, Councilmember Cathcart, that we need those planners. But we need an agreement to actually hire the ones we funded. I'll try one more time for Mr. Rosenau. Star three, to raise your hand electronically if you're there. Okay. Okay.
Hello?
Yes. Hello. Who's this?
Hi. I'm not, I think I may be calling, or calling in on the wrong issue.
Okay.
I'm, I'm checking in tonight on the cold case detective. Is that along the lines of this, or is that?
Nope. That's coming up. But we'll put you down for that, and we'll be sure and call your name for that. So, thanks for calling in.
I appreciate it.
So that we can take care of that. Okay. Any other comment on the substance of the, essentially, the motion to rename the position with no financial impact, one way or the other? Councilmember Wilkerson.
I just want to weigh in and comment that I feel this position is important, not just only to historical preservation, but the cultural preservation of some neighborhoods. Chinatown, including dogs, we had one at one time. I'm very concerned about moving to African-American neighborhoods. I've worked with historical preservation just in the last week and found out information I didn't know about my own people here in Spokane. So, it does play a part of how Spokane grows and its richness and what it contributes, and so that's why I'll be supporting this motion tonight.
All right. Any other comments? All right. With that, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Nay.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. It passes four to two, and that will get us to resolutions.
This one needs five votes to pass. This was the emergency ordinance.
You're right. I'm sorry. That does not pass at this time, because we did not have enough. So, that doesn't pass at the moment. But administration can come back on another night when we have our full council. So, all right. Thanks, Madam Clerk, for that reminder. Now, resolutions and final reading ordinances, which do only take four votes.
Resolution 2021-0009, adopting council's goals and priorities for the first 100 days of 2021.
All right. So, this is a resolution that attaches a document we've been working on as a council for several weeks, trying to set the stage for essentially the first quarter of 2021 and a little bit beyond that. And we've changed it several times based on council feedback, and that's before us. And we have two members of the public that have asked to testify, and the first is Jen Moore. If you would like to hit star three. All right. Ms. Moore, we're not, okay. Hello?
Hello.
Is this Jen?
This is. How are you?
Great. Welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you.
To testify. Go ahead and introduce yourself, and I will just end it, I'll tell you at the end of three minutes for you to wrap up.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
So, good evening. My name is Jen Moore. I was invited to speak on behalf of Diana Gulick and the Spokane Cold Case Initiative in my professional life.
Jen? Jen? I'm going to stop you.
Go ahead.
So, you signed up for a resolution right now, but it sounds like you want to talk about cold cases, which is for open forum, which is going to be a little bit later. We'll be to it quite quickly. But I'm, I'm going to put you, put you on the list for that, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Sure. And then, but we do have Nicolette Occultree, if you want to hit star three. All right. Nicolette, if you're there, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, this is Nicolette Occultree. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I am delighted to see this list of goals for your first 100 days of 2021. I won't pick on you too much, other than just to mention it, but hopefully, next year, we can see this kind of resolution at the beginning of the first 100 days instead of 30 days in. But I do appreciate a lot of what I see on here, including universal credit and background checks for tenants, legal services for tenants, posting, the job listing for a new civil rights position. I know that's been a long time coming, the housing action items, standards for pop-up homeless shelters, and even approving the police guild contract that complies with civilian oversight. Many of these things, I know, will come with a lot of discussion over the next few weeks, and to be sure, there have been a lot of discussions about these things over the last few years. But I did want to spend my remainder of time just talking about the last item here, which is Enact Public Records Act Response Improvement Ordinance. I'm a big fan of public records. I think they're a critical tool for citizens to use to keep governing bodies and agencies held accountable. It's also an excellent tool for these governing bodies and agencies to show that they are indeed working transparently for the people that they serve. This helps foster a healthy relationship between those who govern and those who are being governed. I urge you to consider including something that says that once a citizen files and pays for a public record, that that record be made available online to all citizens at no additional cost. There's no reason two or more citizens should have to pay for access to the same documents. By doing this, I think it actually might save the records department more time and money in the future. I totally understand that certain events can cause a records department to suddenly be flooded with requests, and yet, these requests need to be addressed quickly and completely. And indeed, there are many laws governing this in the first place. I personally am dealing with an issue with a public records request that I placed with the Spokane Regional Health Department, and I know they have been flooded with records requests, but that was back in October. I wasn't given a response within the first five days, which is required. And then, when I was given a response, I was told it would be available in two months. That date came and went. No response, no update on the delay, and I'm still now waiting for those records. So, I am grateful for all these things on this list, but especially that last one on the list, because I think that is a critical tool for both citizens and governing agencies and bodies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. And that's the end of public comment on that. Any council comment? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I would just say, not everything on this list is something that I agree with. Some are some things I certainly do. Some are some topics of interest and intrigue, and there are some that I'm guessing I will not support ultimately in the end. But I'm going to support the resolution. I think it's a good opportunity to advance the discussion on all of these items. And I'll just add that I agree with Nicolette on the public record stuff. I mean, that can be really, really frustrating to not get access to that, to those documents in a timely manner. So, very much agree with you, Nicolette, and very interested in finding some, hopefully, cost-effective solutions to improving that, that situation.
Other council commentary? Great. I will just add to both Councilmember Cathcart and Nicolette that that concept of once one person makes the request, just putting it online for everyone, that is in the language of a first draft of that ordinance, and I think it makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons, and there's some other. We do, especially since the clerk is right here with us, we have an amazing staff who does public records, but we have not resourced it appropriately to the appropriate demand from the public to get them. So, I'm looking forward to some improvements on that and some robust discussion on that. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That does pass, six to zero. And we are having our council retreat tomorrow. We're going to talk a little bit more about this in terms of who wants to work on which issues so that we can get implementation plans for all of these and do our best to get them done in the first 100 days of the year. So, thanks for everyone's cooperation on that so far. And that brings us to an ordinance.
Ordinance C-36005, relating to the rates for sewer changes, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 13.03.1010 to Chapter 13.03 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and setting an effective date.
And this is very minor wording changes to ordinance updates we did at the end of last year. There's no one signed up from the public. Is there any council commentary? Seeing and hearing none, I'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. That passes six to zero. And we don't have any first reading ordinances for this evening. We do have one hearing with a related ordinance.
H-1, final reading ordinance C-36004, relating to amendments to the existing building and conservation code, Section 17F.070.470 and 17F.070.490 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
And there is no public commentary on, I believe, my understanding, of just an update of these provisions. Any council commentary? Oh, sorry. Jason is on the line to give us an update. Go ahead, Jason.
Yes, thank you, council members. I'm Jason Ruffing. I'm from the city of Spokane. I work in code enforcement. I am specifically tasked with addressing substandard buildings and more specifically, working with the building official hearing process, which is our administrative hearing process that we route abandoned, unfit, substandard properties through. This context amendment adds wording to two sections of our existing building and conservation code. Those sections formalize receivership, which is a superior court judicial approval process for properties. It formalizes receivership as an alternative to demolition orders from the building official through that hearing process. The priority here is to use more court processes and judicial orders in pursuit of more holistic relief to some of these distressed properties rather than administrative actions that focus merely on symptoms. This is, like I said before, it formalizes this alternative. This is a relationship that's been in place between code enforcement and city, the city legal department. For a number of years, we've had success with this receivership process as a way to address abandoned properties and substandard buildings, and we're just looking to formalize that path, build on that relationship, and hopefully, bring distressed properties back online, adding to the housing stock, and finding ways to continue to maintain properties here in the city of Spokane. I am available for questions if anyone has any.
Councilmember Stratton.
I just want to say to Jason and to Matt Fulson, the two breaks behind this, you guys have done an amazing job. This has been really a challenging area, and a lot of us recognize that. So, thank you for your efforts and for listening and for hanging in there with us and for trying to make this a process that might be a little bit easier on everybody, and we're not knocking down homes, we're able to, to, you know, clean those homes up and get them sold. So, but I do really appreciate you and Matt Fulson for everything you've done for us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep. I join that in really focusing on, instead of tearing buildings down, repurposing them, getting them back in the market. So, and I think, I'm hoping this is just the start of some additional initiatives in that regard that we've talked about, land banks and things like that. So, that's great. There's no public comment on this. Any other council commentary? All right. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I was just going to be thankful also, not only getting this updated, but as you were going through this process, Jason, actually educating the public about zombie homes, abandoned homes, and why they have been moved and why they haven't been acted on, and the challenges that were presented to people who really wanted to invest in them to make them somewhere livable. So, I appreciate the educational component that went along with this ordinance also.
Thank you as well, and thanks for your sponsorship of this proposal.
Yeah. All right. We'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That is a six to zero, and that passes. We have no more business besides public forum, and we have six people who want to discuss cold cases and the one person who simply wants to discuss general issues. So, if, again, you're on the phone, I'll call your name and ask you to press star three, and I'll invite you to introduce yourself, and you'll get up to three minutes. And then, after that, you need to press star three to unraise your hand or to lower your hand, and then I'll call the next person's name. So, with that in mind, the first person that I have signed up for this is Diana Gulick. Diana, if you'd like to introduce yourself, and then you have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Diana Gulick. I'm attending tonight to share some of my story and ask for current funds to be reallocated to fund a cold case unit focused on investigating and solving cold case homicides and sexual assaults. I created a petition that went live January 23 of this year and has already accumulated over 220 signatures. I've also created a Facebook group with over 400 members, many of whom share the same pain of knowing what it's like to not have justice for their loved ones. On June 3 of 1989, my brother was 13 years old and was murdered. His death devastated our family and the community as a whole. His death devastated our family and the community as a whole. As a child, I could not understand the complexities of how this happened and tried to wrap my mind around the fact that no one was arrested. Some of my earliest memories were being afraid that someone might kill me as I walked down the street. There had been an altercation at a park the night of his death. Witnesses said my brother stepped in between both groups to stop any potential physical fight. It's noted in the police report that one of the aggressors was alleged to have said, "One of you is going to die tonight." There was a lot of talk about this altercation, and many people came forward giving tips. The people from the park were given a lie detector test and were said to have been truthful. Three days after Russell's murder, vice principals from Barrettson Lewis and Clark High School were advised to announce over the intercoms they would not be accepting any more tips regarding these people because they passed their lie detector test and were considered innocent. This also meant the detectives did not follow up or investigate their alibis. I don't say this to point the finger at Spokane Police. I think they thought they were doing what they thought was right at the time. I think we can agree now with the advancement of technology and investigative techniques. This is no longer the right thing to do. My brother deserves a fair and thorough investigation. The people who murdered him and bragged about it for years after at parties need to be brought to justice. Several people have come to the police and made statements that the killers confessed to them. The fact is, this is a solvable case. We just need the time and resources from some of the talented detectives we already have at the police department. My brother, Russell Evans, was born July 22nd, 1975. He was brutally murdered and left to die alone in the street at the age of 13. I'm saddened that my story is not unique. My story is one of over 100 other unsolved murders. I've spoken to dozens of people over the past weeks with similar heartbreak they are living with every day. Please help us. Please help our families. Please don't let Spokane be a place where killers and rapists are not held accountable. Please let them know that you will work with us to bring justice to our families and loved ones and that they will never be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana, for sharing that story. And it looks like from the sign-up list, you have a lot of support with you tonight. Elizabeth Gulick, if you would hit star three to raise your hand. All right, Elizabeth, if you'd like to introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Hi, thanks. So, yeah, my name is Elizabeth Gulick, and I'm here to support my sister and the other members of our Spokane community whose families have suffered through tragedies of unsolved So, I've had the chance through my sister's experience of losing her brother to homicide to gain somewhat of an understanding of how horrendous it is to experience a family member being murdered, how it devastates parents, siblings, cousins, other family members, and friends, and other community members, and it changes lives forever. So, to experience such a trauma and to never get justice for the homicide, even after trying everything in one's power, to never have answers, or sorry, to never have questions answered and justice never reserved is unfathomably horrible, which I'm sure we can all empathize with. So, I'm asking city council to reallocate current funds towards opening up a cold case unit to specifically investigate unsolved homicides and sexual assaults. I ask that you all support this very meaningful and very important and sadly necessary position that Spokane is lacking. Having an unsolved murder detective could help to bring justice to those whose lives were taken, prevent further murders or other crimes from being committed by the guilty criminals who never faced justice, and it could help give answers and resolution to family and friends of homicide victims and sexual assault victims. Spokane, being a city of this size, needs a cold case unit. We do have the money, and I am here to voice that now should be the time, and you all can help make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for sharing that as well. Next is Christian Rosenau, if you'd like to hit star three. All right. Christian, if you'd like to introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Christian Rosenau. I'm Diana Gulick's cousin, Russell Evans' cousin. I'm also here to support my cousin as well as all our community members that have suffered the loss of a loved one. Unfortunately, they've never found justice. It's been over 30 years, and it's just been, it's been a tough, a tough go for so many families in the Spokane area for those that have lost loved ones and have found no justice. You know, the wonderful thing is that now that we have technology available to us as far as the DNA, you know, Spokane can make a difference not just here but nationally. I saw that on the national news about the 12-year-old Marcy Biles who was murdered, you know, in 1985. That case was recently solved and made the national news. You know, what a difference that that made for the family. I just can't stress enough how just one detective can do so much to help our community one case at a time. With the technology available that can go into CODIS and catch these killers, Spokane needs this. And I know that if we have the resource available, we will be able to prevent current and future murders and other crimes because these people that have done these crimes, these murders in our town, you know, they're still around, walking around today more than likely. And so, I just, not only is it important that people find justice for our past, but for our present and for our future and for our children, that there is someone out there that's supporting us and helping us find these people that are hurting our community. So, I really thank you, councilmembers, for really hearing this tonight, and I really do hope that you take it into consideration and to the mayor and to the top to really put Spokane on the map as a community that cares about its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenau. Next is Heidi Erlich, if you would like to press star three. Heidi, if you'd like to introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, council president. I'm Heidi Erlich. I'm a resident of Spokane Valley, Washington, and I've lived and worked in Spokane since I was in first grade, long before the Spokane Valley was even a separate city. I came open forum tonight to advocate for funds to be reallocated to fund a cold case unit to solve unsolved homicides and sexual assaults in our community. Diana is one of my dear friends and colleagues. I did not know her brother, but I know Diana, and she dedicates a lot of time and energy to counseling individuals, both children and adults, who've gone through trauma. So, she has really found a way to bring meaning to what's happened to her family and work in the community, and I really want to speak on her behalf tonight. In my work as a mental health counselor, the past 11 years, I have worked with people with significant trauma, including sexual assaults, child abuse and neglect, suicide loss, and survivors of homicide loss. Losing someone to a traumatic death not only puts someone at risk for PTSD, but also something called complicated bereavement or grief. Unlike other types of grief, this experience leaves someone experiencing something very similar to depression, but with the added component of a relentless yearning for their loved one. Specific to homicide loss, the loved one seeks to understand why and know how this could happen. When the person or people responsible are charged, there is often a drawn-out process of legal proceedings that may or may not result in justice. For survivors of homicide loss, where there is no person or people found responsible for the crime, there is no chance at all of any sort of justice for the family and the loved ones. The lack of knowing what for any sort of justice, the lack of knowing what happened or who perpetrated the homicide, further complicates the trauma and the grief the loved ones left behind are dealing with. I believe our community is known for caring. I often hear Spokane referred to as the big little town, meaning we have the tight-knit values of a small town even though we are not a small town. I believe opening a cold case unit is one way our community can rise again to the occasion to let our survivors of homicide loss know and the survivors of sexual assaults know that we will not forget or rest until all that has been done can be done, or all that can be done has been done, that we stand up and cry out with them for justice. City council, please consider reallocating funds for a cold case unit for solving unsolved homicides and sexual assault. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Jen Moore to dial star three. All right. Jen, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, good. My name is Jen Moore, and I was invited here on behalf of my friend Diana. In my professional life, I'm a trauma researcher, children's advocate, and trauma-informed systemic change consultant and trainer. I've worked with many mental health agencies, educational systems, and youth programs in a variety of settings to address the immediate and long-term impacts of childhood trauma. Throughout this work, I've encountered many victims who've been impacted by crimes whose perpetrators never faced justice, many of them under the age of 12. I've had the unfortunate experiences of dealing with unanswerable questions such as, "Why does no one care that my mom is murdered?" Having children tell me they didn't report their own sexual assault because no one did anything when my aunt did, so why should I bother? Less recently, I've worked with tribal youth who are missing one or more indigenous relatives. I've witnessed how victims without justice develop maladaptive coping strategies such as drug addiction, increased suicide rates, and disenfranchisement with the justice system. In my personal time, I'm a, quote, citizen detective and been following many cases solved by cold case units using evidence that's been languishing for years, sometimes decades. I was shocked to find out the following statistics, that since 1965, national and local homicide clearance rates have been declining, from an average of 91% solve rate in 1965 to less than 65% of cases in 2019. In Spokane, these numbers went from 100% to less than 50. More than one-third of murderers are never caught. For indigenous Americans, more than one-half of these cases are never even reported. Not only are these cases unresolved, but their victims' names are not even recorded. When looking at sexual assault, the statistics are even more dismal. Only 220 of 1,000 rapes are even reported, and of those, 2.4 end incarceration, meaning that of every 1,000 rapes, less than five victims receive justice. Over a quarter of convicted predators reoffend upon release, and studies show that offenders usually are serial convictors, with many felons admitting to committing four to six additional crimes prior to their current conviction. These numbers suggest that perpetrators are most often serial offenders, and investigating cold cases would prevent or deter offenders committing additional attacks. Knowing I share the community with others who've literally gotten away with murder or have committed countless acts of sexual predation is terrifying, both personally and professionally. Many of these cases have evidence waiting to be processed. However, without a dedicated cold case unit, these individuals will continue to walk with us. Failure to address these cases is a form of institutionalized re-traumatization and communicates a lack of regard for those impacted by unsolved crimes. Please dedicate funding and research to process the evidence and investigate these cold cases. This will not only provide peace and justice to victims, it will help mitigate the ongoing trauma associated with violent crime and send a message to offenders that they're not welcome here. I implore you to prioritize the funding and staffing of a cold case unit in Spokane. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, my last speaker on this topic, but we have one other speaker, is Ted Gulick, if you would like to press star three. All right, Ted, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Hey, Ted Gulick here. As the second-largest metropolitan area in the state, I mean, we're growing substantially. We've had record tax revenues and multiple tax increases. But on this topic, we've fallen behind. I'm asking that the council would allocate funding for a full-time cold case unit to investigate homicides and sexual assaults. And if the council can't, we ask that you could provide information on how much this would cost and look at options for private funding. This is a, this topic has grown momentum, and people are really getting behind it. And it's something that can unite the community regardless of race, political affiliations, or socioeconomic status. And this would also build a lot of trust in the police department. So, according to the Constitution, the government has four main functions, and it's to ensure domestic tranquility, establish justice, promote general welfare, and provide defense. And in my opinion, this seems to meet all these criteria. So, not having this unit, it instills fears amongst many of the community members, and it allows these perpetrators to walk free and possibly reoffend, likely to reoffend. So, we're asking that this will be added to next week's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gulick. And then, we have one.
Council president.
All right.
Council president, can I make one quick comment?
Yes.
Yeah, just from the folks that just shared their concerns about the cold case issue tonight, I just wanted to share with them. I had met with Diana a couple of weeks back, and I do have a meeting set with SPD leadership in a couple of weeks to talk about this very issue. And so, hopefully, some progress can be made on trying to figure out a way forward.
Yep, that's, yeah. It doesn't necessarily require city council to do anything. There's several unfilled positions in the police department. But we did have one more speaker who signed up, but it just didn't work in the system. So, I'm going to invite Emily Rosenau to hit star three. Is that you, Emily?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes. So, Emily, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Emily Rosenau. I'm 22 years old and a student at Eastern Washington University, enrolled in the elementary education program. The issue in reallocating funds to Spokane's cold case unit is so important to my family, and I know so many others. Resources for our community to be advanced and changed, to bring resolution, takes time, energy, and money. To make waves of change in our community, that takes funding, and that's why we are here, so we can advocate for this. The families of the victims in these homicide and sexual assault cases have yet to see the criminal be brought to justice in these cold cases. With our advancements in forensics in the United States, I have faith that we will be able to one day convict these criminals. We cannot change what happened in the past, but if there was a way to put my family and many others at some level of ease, that is a goal myself and many others will work towards. I think about the love I have for the Spokane community and our advancements and wonderful changes we continue to make year after year. I think about the community I will raise my future children in one day and the future children I will teach. To have these funds, I have so much faith these mysteries will be solved overall and keep our communities that much safer. Thank you so much for listening to me and my family members today. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Emily. And then, we have one last speaker tonight, Nicolette Occle Tree. Nicolette, if you would like to hit star three. All right, Nicolette, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Hello, I'm Nicolette Occle Tree, still. I previously intended to use my one opportunity to speak during open forum this month, to speak about open forum itself, but after hearing some of these powerful cold case testimonies, I do want to voice my support in council either, you know, committing to some sort of resolution, to be in favor of the police department adding on this unit or whatever would be necessary. And to relate that to some of my previous concerns about public records, I do think that a way to ensure that a cold case that a way to ensure that a cold case unit could operate successfully would be to guarantee that all police records, including body cam footage, be stored permanently. According to a Spokane Review article I read a few weeks ago, but was written much earlier than that, they discussed about how body cam footage and data storage, which wasn't in a current investigation, would be deleted after a year. And if that's true, then that certainly needs to change, not only for cold case situations, but for other kinds of public records requests. I also want to tell you about an emotional roller coaster that I personally went on today when I was reading about an unidentified man who was found dead on Front Street at the end of November of last year. My stomach turned, reading details about how his body had been found burnt, and that they were unable to identify him. I continued to get more and more sick to my stomach when reading the description of the gentleman, because I have a houseless friend who pretty much met that description, and who wore similar shoes, as I recall. I frantically started contacting other friends that I know that may have seen that friend and know that that friend is still alive, and I was beyond relieved to find out that, in fact, that friend that I thought was dead was actually not only alive, but no longer houseless, and is now in permanent housing. And I just, I can't tell you how much of a roller coaster that was, but I'm delighted to know that that person was not who I thought it was, and also that that person is no longer houseless. For all the criticisms we give toward how we handle the houseless here in Spokane, it's important to remember that for a lot of folks, they do find the help that they need, and that a lot of the houseless population are not all the same folks. The people do actually graduate out of their situation into permanent housing, and I just hope for all of us that we don't have more of these situations. I know at least five people have died houseless in the cold this year, and I hope that these don't become cold cases, pardon the pun, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. And unless there's anything else for the good of the order that-- You're on mute, Brian. Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. Thank you, Nicolette. And unless anyone else has any, yes, Councilmember Strattan.
Councilmember Cathcart, if you need any help at all with your meeting regarding cold cases, please let me know. I really think, after hearing some of these tonight, that we may not be able to do anything right away, but boy, we could sure help apply some pressure and some information, and, you know, to get the word out there that this is something, I think that is really important. And if you need any help at all, let me know.
I appreciate that, absolutely.
That councilmembers would get involved too, because Councilmember Mum and I talked about this, I don't know, a few years back, and it just never happens, and it just seems to me that the more people that speak up and apply some of that pressure, we might be able to do some of these things.
And just a reminder, I think, not so much on the cold homicide cases, but the cold sexual assault cases, we did approve some, a position to work through those. So we are making some progress, but there is nothing like people with lived experience to come share with us that. So thank you all for your testimony, and hope that we can ease that burden soon. With that, that's all the business that we have this evening, and so I'm going to adjourn the meeting. And again, just a reminder, next week, no 3:30 briefing session. We're going to take the consent agenda at 6:00 PM. But we'll see you all next week if you come to our committee meeting, Urban Experience, at 1:15, and then 6:00 PM legislative session next Monday. We're adjourned.